It's six o'clock, so I will call the school board meeting for Wabash City Schools to order. Roll call.
Rod Kelsheimer is absent. Everybody else is here.
Okay, having a quorum, we will recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We always start by reading our, the Wabash City School mission. Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career ready for success in a global community. Welcome. We've got some visitors. Shall we start with the science clip?
Sure. All right. Hello, gentlemen. Ryan Evans, like, teach science and we've been doing the science club trip for a couple of years now. And it's always good to come back and be able to share our experiences with everyone in the community and see how it affects the kids going forward in the future. We've had a lot of kids that have been on trips and that are now college age. And a lot of them, I talk to when they come back and they're like, we went out to this national park, but we went to here and we did all this stuff. And I'm thinking, that's really, really cool. I'm glad you had the opportunity. And they say, like, if it wasn't for something that we did, we were younger, we may have not had the courage or the know-how to do some of the stuff that they do now, or wouldn't even be comfortable going that far away from home. So just talking to them, it makes me feel good that something like that has impacted them in their adult life. And then even the kids that have gone in the past couple of years, they, there's always stories that they tell and different things that they remember that I don't even remember because it's just, there's so many things that went on. It was, it was really cool. This year, we went to the Southwest. We made Grand Canyon National Park. We went to Zion National Park. We went to Mesa Verde National Park. And this year, we went to Rice Canyon for the first time, which we never had done before. So that was really cool. And then obviously, we went to the Arch, which we usually go to. But I guess recently, they made it a national park. And I was really aware that they made it that designation. It used to be, I think, a national landmark, but they totally redid everything. So if you guys haven't been there in a while, it's really cool. They added a nice exhibit to the museum. It's pretty neat. We traveled roughly forty-five-ish, under miles, maybe a little more, give or take, all in, two activity buses and our awesome truck, the corporation that pulls the trailer, which is amazing. And the trailer came in handy really, really well. So I wanted to share some testimony from some of the kids that went. Because I have them do evaluations at the end, like, kind of like course evaluations. And they have to do like ratings for the different places we go to. And then they write down some things that they learned, some things they enjoyed, and then ways that the trip could be better for future. And we've used a lot of those to make changes to a lot of different things along the way to improve it every year that we go. And I also brought and asked a couple of guys to come and talk, some of the ones that they really had a good time on the trip and enjoyed it. And I asked them to come talk about their experiences a little bit. So let me just read a couple of things that I had written, or they had written, the other kids on the trip. This person, the question was, what have you learned or gained by participating in this trip? This person wrote, I learned that you can get a lot more done quicker by working together. I learned more about who I am as a person by the choices I made. I learned how to make new friends by giving them respect. I learned that patience is key and a good thing to have. So these are all just seventh and eighth graders. And some of the reflections they make are pretty deep reflections on things that they had gained along the way. Most of the stuff that they write about, they gain or learn, really don't have anything to do with facts. It's more about what they learned about themselves by going on the trip than anything about the specific science and stuff that we learned. Obviously, if you ask them, hey, what about this, you know, tell me about the museum in Northern Arizona. And they could probably tell you some of the different cultures that we learned about. But that's not, not the one thing that they usually write. It's more about like how they've changed as a person, which I thought was really cool. All right, this person, same question. This person said, by participating in this trip, I learned not to judge people before you really know them, which is, I think, really cool. Same question. This person wrote, one major thing that I've learned while being on this trip is responsibility. For example, remembering your wet clothes on the picnic tables, drying, or grabbing, saving, or grabbing them out of the, grabbing my money for souvenirs and food. Another major thing that I learned is patience and teamwork. While setting up a tent and taking them down every day may seem simple, it becomes huge tasks the more it goes on. This person wrote, all of all, I learned a lot about history, oh, sorry. I learned a lot about the different communities. There are so much different powers and the history behind them. So that was cool. And I'll ask another question that says, what is the best thing about the trip for you? And I got two other responses of things that they wrote. They said, I think the best thing for me was hanging out with my friends and having, having fun and there being almost no technology. I think this is good because I had to interact with people and not just run, sleep, or play games by myself. This person wrote, the best thing about this trip was Mr. Evans picking the groups when we go places. So I randomly mix up people just so they have to interact with people. And so when we started the trip, I didn't think that I would actually make friends. I thought that after the trip, we would all just forget about each other. But I see how that's not the case. The people I didn't know, I now consider my friends. We can carry conversations, have a good time together. And the people I did know, I got to know even better. I feel closer to people on this trip, and I think that is because Mr. Evans forced us to interact with each other.
That's not bad.
So those are just some of the things. And there's a lot of different things that are written on here. But for the sake of time and to give to these guys, this year, I'm going to turn it over to them. So if anyone wants to go, great, man. Good job.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Hipskine, and I go to Wabash National School. I was asked to present what I liked about the summer trip. It was awesome. We went to the Southwest where we got to see the Grand Canyon and a bunch of other landmarks. We got, we had journals that we had to write every day so we could remember it in the future. And what I liked about the trip the most was the whitewater rafting in Colorado. I've never really been anywhere except for in Tennessee. So it's pretty cool seeing Colorado, because Colorado is a pretty cool place. And the food was pretty good all the way around the trip. We had PB and J for breakfast most of the time. And then we had some green beans for dinner, mac and cheese, and I'm pretty sure some hamburgers, which were pretty good on those super days. And I'm pretty sure some of the times we went out to eat, I think, most of the time a little bit when we were in a hurry. And before we go to, go to sleep and stuff, we, we played some games like Mafia, if you ever heard of that. And we played some, we made up some stories. And over time, someone went up, they just made the story long as it goes. And then we did some learning activities to show what we learned. And setting up the tent was pretty cool. I've never really gone camping before, so setting up a tent was pretty cool. And Mr. Evans chose our group for tent. So it was pretty funny, knowing some different people, a lot of different people. And the trip was pretty cool, and I would love to have an opportunity to go to some others.
Hello, my name is Luke Blossom. And by the way, I'm doing this like entirely from the heart. The summer science trip we went on last summer was probably one of the most like, like wondrous and most fun experiences I ever had on the trip. Yeah. Mr. Evans, this guy like got me into like things that I never really knew before. And we, we did a lot of fun stuff. Like, we went like, we went to St. Louis and swam all in one day, which was pretty nice. And this was all in nineteen days. And he, he also got me into foods I really liked, like chili. Like, I never really liked chili until I ate some of his, and it was really, really good. And the summer trip just genuinely like made me like a better and more like wise and humble person. Because before this, I was like away from, I wasn't really away from my parents that often. I think the only time was like spending a night with my cousins or my grandparents or anything like that. I think those were the few only times. But that was only for like a day. In this trip, it was actually like, for like almost a month, like three weeks. Yeah, it, it just really changed me as a person. Because I, at first, I did not think I was going to make it. Because like around the second and third day, I was like, I want to go home. But, but around like the fifth or sixth day, I was like, oh, okay, it was getting nice. And by the last day, I did not want to go home. I wanted to stay camping for the rest of my life. Yeah. Yeah, the science trip was a very memorable experience I had.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for them? Okay, thank you. And now we're going to have a presentation by student council.
So our student body president could be here. She had a golf meet. Maybe? She golfed tonight. So me and Hope came here instead. I'm the student body vice president, and she's our senior class president.
So luckily, we've been able to bring the club crew back. We are struggling to get the clubs after COVID, so we have a very long list now, which is really good. I know I'm running Eco Club, and things are running really smooth. We have a new like schedule for things that have been working out pretty nice with different off and on weeks. So that's been a big thing. We, we've been doing our painting of the ticket booth in our parking spot, which has been really good. I know it's been bringing the senior class together. I know our class, we haven't been the closest, but doing this has been really good with bringing us together, so.
So this is one of the many slides we have on Home Code. It's just too much to put on one. We have our themes picked out for this year. The freshmen have decided to be fugitive freshmen. Sophomore surface, so it's like step on up to the sophomore surface is how they, that's a wrong name though. The juniors were the Jurassic Juniors. It's a good old classic. And we've decided to go with Super Mario, and we're hoping to win for once. We also have our dress-up days and our activities picked out. We did them a little bit differently this year. We wanted to make sure that every class had an opportunity to get an idea forward. So we gave them the chance to put up one activity in one dress-up day, and then we scheduled them on days after that. So I know the seniors, we kept our ideas together on the same day. I'm not sure how it went with, I think for the others, it was mostly their activities and dress-up dates ended up on the same day as well. But it was just a really good way to keep everyone involved and make sure they had a voice. We've sent out our court, and we've had the votes in for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. There's not as many of them as there are seniors since they cannot win, but we still have them and they still get to feel involved and included. So we have all of our court members for the underclassmen. And then here, we have our seniors listed. I know a couple of them are on student council themselves. We have Alex and Annie will be coming back this year to crown our homecoming king for this year on September twenty-third.
And for our this fall, we figured out our ticket prices, so we'll be ready. Getting our ideas out with Paint Enchanted Forest as our theme is there, so we're going to move on that, too.
Who painted the Mario on the ticket booth?
Me and my friend.
That was well done. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to comment on an agenda item tonight? Okay. Revisions. I need a motion to approve the removal of item four dot E dot two and four dot E dot three. Adding, yeah. Okay. Do I need to say it, or can we just? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
H, consent agenda. Agenda. We have the minutes, claims, donations. A, we have two hundred and fifty dollars from Anna Sebold in memory of Cayman Burton to the boys tennis team. B, fifteen thousand dollars from Ford Meterbox Company. And C, one thousand dollars in honor of Luddy Young, nineteen forty-six to nineteen fifty, high school math teacher. Do I have a motion? Oh, and financials.
No financials, this time.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Discussion?
For our donations, first, we'd like to say thank you to Ms. Sebold for honoring the memory of Cayman Burton. Second, we'd like to thank Ford Meterbox for their generous donation and their continued support of our school. And then finally, we'd like to thank, it was Captain David Smith, Wabash Class of nineteen fifty-six, for his donation in memory of a former Wabash High School math teacher.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, September nineteenth, at Wabash City Hall at six P M. There's some items of communication and old business.
Last month, we tabled changes to the Athletic Handbook. Those changes will not be implemented, so there are no changes to the Athletic Handbook at this time.
Okay. B, approve, wait, new business. A, approve Melissa Harrell as music volunteer for W M S and W H S. Discussion?
Ms. Harrell will volunteer throughout the year in our music department, and we appreciate her willingness to assist.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. B, approve recommendation to terminate Brandon Persinger as food service driver effective August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two.
So move.
Discussion?
We'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Persinger for his service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. C, accept resignations from the following classified staff. One, Autumn Allen as cafeteria employee effective August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Two, Donna Dietrich as paraprofessional in the rice classroom at OJ Neighbors effective August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And three, Chris Beecham as W M S building technician effective September fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. That's okay. Discussion?
We want to thank Ms. Allen and Ms. Dietrich for their time and service to Wabash City Schools. We'd also like to say thank you to Mr. Beecham, who has worked for Wabash City Schools for thirteen years. We appreciate all that he has done for us and wish him the best of luck in his new adventure.
Real quick on that. How many years have you gone on the trip?
Yeah. At least ten. I was just thinking that too. It's going to be a big loss for you, too.
Can he still go on the trip?
Well, because of the job, he won't be able to.
Oh, oh, yeah. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. D, approve transfers for the following classified staff. One, Megan Harrell as cafeteria employee to head cook at OJ Neighbors effective August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Two, Shelley Ford as cafeteria employee to head cook at LHC effective August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And three, Marcasia James from Rice Classroom Paraprofessional at OJ Neighbors to preschool paraprofessional at LHC effective August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Discussion?
Ms. Harrell and Ms. Ford both have moved into the head cook positions at their buildings. And Ms. James, with her moving from OJ to LH, really will work out because she is working the Y Aftercare Program at LH. So she'll be working during the day with students that she's also working with after school.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. E, approve recommendation to hire the following classified staff. Tiffany Wagner as W M S cafeteria employee effective August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And April Welsh as W C S bus aide effective September eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Discussion?
Ms. Wagner fills one of our open cafeteria positions, and Ms. Welsh will be one of our bus aides on our special education buses.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. F, approve recommendation to accept the following grants. One, ten thousand dollars from A W S Foundation to OJ Neighbors to develop school-wide sensory interventions. And two, six thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars from the Early Childhood Development Fund, administered by the Community Foundation of Wabash County to pay towards childcare for four LHC students. Discussion?
The A W S Foundation out of Fort Wayne provides grants to schools and businesses in one of five initiatives. OJ's application falls under the Education and Employment category, which provides access to educational resources and activities to be successful learners, both academically and in developing life skills that offer individuals with disabilities equal opportunity for meaningful employment. This grant will be used to create sensory intervention throughout the room, or throughout all rooms in the school. And the grant from the Early Childhood Development Fund will be used to pay the preschool fees for four specific students.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. G, approve the following teachers as W H S after-school tutors for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year. One, Lucas Helton. Two, Ellie Mylum. Three, Jen Smith. Four, Erin Sapusik. Five, Fortunato Correo. Discussion?
These five high school teachers will rotate, providing after-school tutoring throughout the year for W H S students. We appreciate their willingness to provide extra support to our students.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. H, approve Stacy Bear as homebound instructor for a student at LHC for one hour per week at her hourly rate effective August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Discussion?
This homebound instruction is part of the student's I E P.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Hi, approve the following for athletics. Excuse me. One, resignation of Julio Lovano as W H S boys soccer assistant. Two, resignation of Chris Beecham as assistant athletic director effective September fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Three, W H S baseball maintenance, twenty, is that supposed to be twenty-one and twenty-two?
Because it never got approved last year.
Okay, Jack Holling. Four, W H S boys soccer assistant, Aiden Benish. Five, W H S girls golf volunteer, Chad McWort. Six, W M S cheer volunteer, J C Gall. Seven, athletic supervision, Matt Daughtry, Justin Denny, and Caleb Kelsheimer. Discussion?
We want to thank Mr. Lovano and Mr. Beecham for their time and service to Wabash Athletics. We also want to thank the rest of the individuals for their willingness to volunteer, assist, and supervise for our athletic department.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. J, approve overnight field trip for W H S F C A to the Indiana F C A Retreat at Shiloh Park in Marion, Indiana, September seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Discussion?
This was a state retreat that our F C A will participate in. I believe this is the first time they've been able to attend it since COVID. It's something that we have done in the past. We have three adult chaperones that will attend with approximately thirty students, and the fee for the students to attend is thirty-five dollars.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, approve curricular material fees for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three for the following buildings. LHC, OJ Neighbors, W M S, and W H S. Discussion?
So the sheets shows our course fees for all grade levels across the district. Our technology fee has increased. This is due in part to moving to a three-year usage cycle from a four-year usage cycle. It also includes the iPad insurance that families do not have to apply for and pay for on their own. At the kindergarten level, our fees have gone up about sixty dollars. This is due to that increased tech fee and the new math curriculum. In the past, we had no kindergarten fees for math. In grades one through four, we have increases of about twenty-five dollars to twenty-nine dollars. Again, it's due to the increased tech fee and consumable fees for art and Project Lead the Way. These consumables were not charged in the past, so all the cost to replenish supplies used by the students had to be paid for out of the building supply lines. And for middle school and high school, fees are dependent on the courses that students take. These families will have the increased tech fee, but we cannot give an exact or estimate of the increase or decrease due to the fact that the fees are dependent on a student's schedule.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
Next Monday, our students K through twelve will begin their fall N W E A testing in math and language arts. We want to wish them good luck and remind them to do their absolute best. Teachers and administrators use this data to determine specific needs for each and every student. Our Wednesday P L Cs are in full swing. Our secondary teachers and administrators meet before school on Wednesday, and elementary teachers meet after school on Wednesday. Each of our building has, buildings have developed their school mission, and teams have created their meeting norms, which are the standards they agree to when they meet together to ensure positive and productive meetings. Teams are now working on the creation of their curriculum maps for each subject or class. This is really going to be ongoing probably for the remainder of this semester and potentially longer, just depending on how many maps the team needs to create. We do want to remind families that on Wednesday, September fourteenth, and we will put something on Facebook and we'll do an all-call. This is a staff P D day, so there will be no school or e-learning on that day for students. And finally, our student count day is Friday, September sixteenth. We are right around fourteen hundred forty students. We were hoping to be at about fourteen fifty. Sometimes schools see a few more students enroll after Labor Day, so we're hopeful that we'll maybe pick up another student or two in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Items from chief business officer.
The only thing I really wanted to make sure everybody knows, if you don't know, this is budget season, right? And so I have to go back and forth between you guys and the city council. So at our next board meeting, which is the nineteenth, we will do a hearing on our bus replacement plan and C P F. And really, there's not much to the C P F plan, so those are easy. And then I'll fill you in on, on what I'm going to take to the council. But I can tell you now that it's just a little bit less than last year, so we have cut the budget a little bit. It's certainly, you know, moved around. It's not the same in every area. But some of the budget's cut and dried like that, right? Operations has a cap, so we know there's only so much money we can bring in from taxes. And so some of that's all cut and dried, but I'll bring that to you also. And then on October, no, on September twenty-sixth, I will present our budget to the city council for a hearing. And then on October tenth, you guys will adopt our C P F and our bus replacement. And October fourteen, the city council will adopt our budget. So it's really a two-month process, but for, in all purposes, the budget's done. So it's really a two-month process, but, um, for, in all purposes, the budget's done. Uh, I have to have it done by September 1st because of state rules, because our board's appointed, um, so I'm not allowed to work on it after September 1st. So, uh, it's in and it's already on gateway and it's up that, you know, we'll have our hearings. So, um, it's just a lot of meetings for the next couple of months to get it all through.
Okay, thank you. Items from administrators.
Oh, we're really off to a very good start. We're excited about the homecoming coming up soon. Good energy in the building and it's nice to be back to, uh, to normal, as normal as, as high schoolers are, right? Or, or middle schoolers, but, uh, very pleased that this is our, this is our school year and very appreciative of the hard work of our faculty and staff and making this a special year.
Okay, thank you. Items from other visitors? Items from board members?
Thank you, Mr. Evans, for taking these kids on that trip. Um, and thank you for coming to speak about it. Um, it just, that trip blows my mind, the amount of time that you guys go on. I can't even fathom planning a family trip for that long, a little on a trip with a bunch of kids and art kids. Um, it just sounds really cool. Um, so that's great. Um, I also want to thank the high school student council for coming and updating. I always love their updates. Um, and good luck to all the students taking into VVA.
Steven?
Mr. Evans, thanks a lot. It's always great to hear about the trip. It's always great to hear the stories. Mr. Blossom, real quick, um, my son is a sixth, sixth grader, walking to the high school every day.
Yeah.
Impressive, your kids, even high school kids, since Eli says they're treated very well walking through there, it's just nice for those. He was scared to death after open house realized and I gotta walk all the way across and this is, uh, Guyville's classroom. So he, they, they do well for themselves, they treat him well and I think he feels part of the high school in a certain sense, so please share that with your students.
Full disclosure, I'm always on those middle schoolers about staying quiet all the way. But if there's a jerk in the school, it's.
Good. He was worried. But I was, it's impressive that your high school kids are willing to kinda take those kids under their wings, so thank you.
Jason?
Uh, yeah, again, just thank you for the science trip, always like hearing those updates and thanks for coming, sharing about that and, uh, good luck to all the schools, well, the KC 12, gosh, yeah, everyone for the NWEA, yeah, it's a big deal.
Okay. And I too wanna say thank you for coming and presenting about the science trip and I wanted to express my appreciation for Chris Beecham and Tricia. And, uh, it'll be a loss not having them for the science trip. And I know personally, I was like, I know Benjamin had some, you know, money problems and I was able to get ahold of Chris and transfer some money to Tricia and, you know, so it was, I appreciated, you know, it's, I appreciated having them there on the trip and I know that Benjamin really enjoyed being teased by Chris and so Chris will be a loss at the school, I think. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. We're dismissed, we're dismissed, we're adjourned.